Good evening. I'm Janet Anderson. I call to get to order the Town of Lewisboro Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, May 20th, 2025 at 7:31 PM. So for everyone here, the exit is the way you came in. The exits to my left are for emergencies only. To comply with the open meetings law, we must meet in person. And unfortunately, we do not have the ability for the public to attend by Zoom, nor can we stream our meetings to YouTube. However, we will post an audio recording of the this meeting to the town website. Materials considered at this meeting are available in the agenda packet that is posted for this meeting. And members of the public can always express their views by mail or email to planning@lewisboro.ny.gov. Kirsten Conrad, our Planning Board Administrator, has confirmed that the meeting has been duly noticed and legal notice requirements fulfilled. Joining me tonight from the Town of Lewisboro are members of the Planning Board, Paul Fusco, John Guzman, Charlene Delacato, and Bruce Thompson. We do have a quorum, and thus we can conduct the business of the board and vote on any matters that come before us. We also have Jan Johansson from KSCJ Consulting, and Council Judge Seibert, Planning Board Administrator Kirsten Conrad, Building Inspector Kevin Kelly, and I don't see anyone from the CAC, but they might join us later. So with that, we can get started. So first item on our agenda is a decision. This is for calendar number 01-15PB, calendar number 25-15WP, calendar number 06-15SW. This is Copia Garden Center at 475 Smith Ridge Road, South Salem, New York. And this is the application for reapproval of the site development plan for unfinished improvements to the existing Copia Garden Center and expansion of the existing use onto an adjacent tax parcel. So at April's meeting, we discussed trying to look at the various components of this plan. And the resolution that we have deals with the basic plan for the core copia operation and the the activity known as the farmer's grind. So our resolution addresses those two components. And we'll say it was circulated. It had a late change, which I hope everybody got a chance to see. But I'll ask Jan to briefly go through the resolution for us.
Sure. It's basically reapproving the site plan that was previously approved with no modifications. As you mentioned, the farmer's grind's been determined by the building inspector not to qualify as a change of use. It's basically accessory to the main operation at the nursery. So that's indicated in there, as is the requirement for them to comply with any of the Health Department regulations pertaining to the water system. And it's not necessarily a condition. It's just indicating that it's something that they have to comply with with the Health Department. So it's it's and it's also directing the administrator or the wetland component to be handled administratively through our office, as there is no changes to the work being proposed within the buffer. The conditions are basically the exact same conditions as were originally included, and any conditions that were really previously satisfied then removed to just kind of streamline That's basically it. Same project, same resolution as previously adopted.
Yes.
Just for the record, that DOH will do its own enforcement.
Yes.
And it's not like DOH forgets things.
Correct.
So although it's not a requirement, and it's just noted, it has an effect in the sense that we know that DOH is going to follow through.
Yeah, and I think the applicant is working with the DOH.
Yeah, it's just for the record.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was important in the resolution to note that we had, we were aware of it, we've considered the elements, and, you know, we're moving forward. So.
Yep.
And and also, Kevin, I do want to thank you. I hope everything went well with your wife's operation, but I really thank you for getting that letter to us in time for us to to meet tonight. So so with that, I'd look for
I saw move.
For a resolution to approve.
Also.
Okay, and seconded by by John. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. I'm pleased to see this moving forward. Thank you for your patience with us and all your help. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an extension of time request. This is for calendar number 66-17WP and calendar number 12-17SW, the DeBukage Residence at 170 Elmwood Road, South Salem, New York. This is the request for an extension of time for the town wetland permit approval and town stormwater permit approval for a single-family residence driveway septic system. And well, the current expiration date is June 19th, 2025. Is there someone?
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Come on up.
Good afternoon, good morning.
Right, right.
Sunita, how are you, sir? You get younger, I get older. How are you, sir?
We all, we all
And you just have to tell us who you are for the record.
Absolutely. Would you like to? You represent me, and I would love to, but good evening. My name is Zaf Dehukai. My beautiful bride, Yulia, and I own 170 Elmwood Road. Thanks to you all, we have done an absolute stunning job thus far on constructing a bridge and moving forward with clearing the site, footings, foundations. And we are very pleased to report, as of today, we have a roof over our head.
I took a picture a little
Ah, that's too old.
Yeah, a week ago or so. I don't know whether everybody saw.
We're moving to fast.
They do a lot of work.
Sincerely, we are very, very excited to be part of this community. We do live at 43 Laurel Road, but we are asking for renewal of the permits at 170 Elmwood.
Great. I mean, I think it's great that you're moving along. So if unless anybody has any questions, I'd look for a motion to
I'll make a motion that we approve the extension.
For two years, and that would be till June 19th, 2027. I hope it will be done long before that, but we still, we still should, you know, give you the two years that you can have, right?
If you are my guidance, if okay, I would love to welcome you all at our housewarming party.
That would be a wonderful thing.
Sincerely, it wouldn't happen without you all. Jan, thank you for all the effort, guidance. And if I'm going to go and say thank you all for making sure the steps are in place to protect everything that we do, and we're going to report that we have three beautiful rain gardens that were designed by Jan and team, and my building inspector does call them flower gardens and butterfly gardens, but they are there for a reason. Thank you so much.
Wait, wait. So before you go, we we had a motion.
Seconds.
We have a second. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now you may leave. We just had to take that.
Thank you. Good luck.
We had to make sure that
You have been a gen. Look at this. Look at all these white there.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is calendar number 06-22PB, calendar number 05-22WP, calendar number 03-22SW, the Waka Buck Country Club snack bar at 18 Perch Bay Road in Waka Buck, New York. A request for an extension of time for the town wetland permit approval and stormwater permit approval for beachfront improvements, including the renovation of the bathhouse, construction of a pavilion, replacement of the snack bar, and installation of accessible parking and walkways.
Good evening, Michael Soregnano. Dawn McKenzie couldn't be here tonight. She had a conflict, so I'm covering for her. And I'll tell you what she tells me, and of course Kevin and Jan are familiar with the progress at the site. But according to Dawn, all of the stormwater management has been installed at the site. Most of the site, many of the areas are permanently stabilized. The rest are temporarily stabilized and will soon be permanently stabilized. The wetland mitigation plantings have been installed. We're just waiting for a few replacements. It all looks great. Just need more time to wrap up and complete certifications.
Do you have an idea when it looks like that's going to be done?
Well, we're hoping to be done by before camp, summer camp starts the end of June.
Yeah, I think short of a couple outstanding items that are along the time, the elevator lift or chairlift, final sign off for the Health Department, the actual construction portion, they're probably going to be done in three weeks. I mean, that's, I mean, they're going all out.
They're working hard.
You know, but then we're going to come to a screeching hole until we have Health Department saying we're done. Because I think we met on site, and they said they needed from that inspection additional with three or four weeks, I think, to process their work.
Yeah, well, there's a, well, this doesn't involve you, but the kitchen, it's just that they need a few items, valves, backflow valves and things for the kitchen in terms of that portion of the Health Department approval. And that will be done the next week.
Yeah, fire suppression's done, and they're just about there.
So I went to the other side of the lake and used binoculars to look across. And I have to say, I mean, it's, it looks, it looks, it's moving along.
It looks great. And you're welcome to come down the driveway.
I know people are working. I don't want to get in their way. I can look from across, but, you know, maybe at some point in the future. So what we thought would be appropriate would be to to make the extensions co-terminous with the site plan, which I think would be, according to a letter from Zach, I think it was 7/15/27. So if everyone is in agreement with that, I'd look for a motion to approve an extension of time until 7/15/27.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay, John?
I'll second.
And seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. We hope they get it all done very quickly. Okay, the next item on the agenda is calendar number 29-23WP, calendar number 09-23SW, the Bernabo Residence, 96 Post Office Road, Waka Buck, New York. And this is a request for an extension of time to complete conditions numbers 1 to 13 in the Planning Board resolution for the town wetland permit approval and stormwater permit approval.
Good evening, everybody. Unfortunately, our engineer, Peter, was unable to make it tonight. He had something that came up last minute, and my father is out of the country. So you guys have the third stringer tonight, but eventually
And tell us your name for the
My name is Faustino Bernabo.
Okay.
Owner on record is my father, Alex Bernabo. So third stringer, as I said, but first stringer, hopefully when this project gets moving a little further and gets built.
Right.
I'm here tonight to request an extension for the conditions that need to be met on the project. To my understanding, there's only a few left from 1 to 13 that have to be completed. The first one on my list is condition number five, which is the wetland planting bond. I've been in contact with the bond company over the last week, and I'm hoping to get that bond by the end of this week, or if not next week. The other condition, number eight, which is the New York State DEC, SPDES general permit, we haven't been able to complete this because we don't have the MS4 approval. That's what I've been told.
Yeah, we did the, we've sent just two minor comments on the NOI today. So Peter can revise those two questions, and we'll, we'll give you the MS4 acceptance form, and you can file that.
That's great. And then 16 and 17, the pre-construction meeting, we've been attempting to schedule it, but we can't schedule it because I believe we need a building permit first, if that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're really excited to get involved with the community, be be members of the community, obviously. We love the area. We love working with you folks. And the other note I would say is that the superintendent of highways came by, he did a site visit. He approved the driveway with conditions. I can share that with you guys.
I have a copy of that.
Okay.
They have assigned the driveway permit.
So, you know, we've had a couple snags. I mean, for example, we had the buffer agreement with the neighbor. It was not their fault, but it did take like four to five weeks to get that done and filed with Westchester County and, you know, the legal, get it notarized and reviewed by legal. But I think we're on the right track.
They've been actively trying to satisfy the conditions.
Well, I'm glad to see it moving forward. Now, I think, though, when we had a discussion, can we give them an extension when it's conditions?
Well, I think what happened was that the, you had six months to satisfy the conditions and get the permits.
1 to 13.
That didn't happen, and the the request for extension came in after.
Right.
So what we discussed internally was it should almost be like a reapproval to reset the clock, because you can't retroactively extend the
Extend the condition deadlines. All right, so
So if the board was inclined, we can have a resolution, basically the same resolution minus probably a bunch of conditions that were satisfied for your next meeting.
Or could we make a motion to have it be handled administratively by you, and then you don't have to come back to us?
I love coming to yourself.
Well, anytime. The doors are open, but
Avoids the public hearing if you
Yes, that would be good. Yeah, let's go that way.
So that we have to do by motion?
I'll make a motion that we move this to administrative.
I'll second it.
Okay. I think the one thing I should say, though, if that's a reapplication, do they have to fill out a new reapp, a new application? Or can we do this without that?
I think they'd apply for an admin.
Right.
Just with a fee?
Just just with the application form itself, or I think we need any, any new materials.
No materials, just an application?
Yeah, nothing has changed with the House either, so it's
Moving forward, okay.
I imagine that the the board would want the same series of conditions to go along with the administrative permit as you did with the planning board.
I think that's our intent. It's an intent to just do this a little quicker
Yeah.
By having you issue it rather than come back for another resolution.
Do we want to keep the conditions that have already been completed on record in the new application?
Yeah.
They'll be on.
Okay.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second, any little, I had a little further discussion. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect.
Good luck.
And yeah, glad to see that moving forward, too. Okay. Okay, the next item on our agenda is asking for a waiver of site development plan approval. And this is for calendar number 09-24PB, calendar number 19-24WP, calendar number 12-24SW, the Villas at Vista, 920 Oak Ridge Commons, South Salem, New York. And it's an application for phased construction of the 12 housing units that we did already approve and building 9A and B last October. And so maybe you can tell us how this is going to work.
Sure. I'll be with CrossFit Architects for Phil and Oak Ridge Common. As you all know, we recently came to you, and you approved a 12-unit conversion of the existing building, 9, 9A and 9B at Oak Ridge Common. Work has been progressing, and the 9B is, is probably, 9B portion, which is five units, is probably about three, four months from getting ready to apply for CO. However, the resolution stated that we have to finish all the site work prior to getting the CO. The bank came to Phil and said, we'd like to see some units with CO before we give you all the site work money. So we're back here to say we want to phase the work. And we looked at the site, and it easily divides into three phases. So the first phase would be, if you look at my site plan there, the, to the right is north, so, and the pond, I've kind of shown you back there is behind the building. So to the, to the west, basically along the 9A, 9B divide, we would like to call Phase One. So that's where we're building the, let's see if I can show you with this. This area here, that's where we have five, the residential units under construction right now. The site work is not extremely great in this phase. There's retaining walls on either side. There's three decks that will be added back there, two small building additions there, a very small building addition here in this corner. We'll be removing a section of parking lot here and doing a little bit of a parking lot right in that corner right there, just putting in some curbs and removing a few, a few of the existing parking spaces. The second phase that we're proposing is is this phase here, which is the 9A building, again, the four units in there. And that includes the two AFFH units will be in that, in that section. And that will include all the site work in that area as well. That includes removing a portion of the, of the roadway, building the sidewalk. This will be, this will include moving the transformer from, from this side of the building to this side of the building and serving, serving this building with electrical service. I forget to say the storm scepter and the, and the garbage will be in Phase One.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear, that the storm scepter and that garbage center will be in Phase One. So again, we're just kind of cleaning up the site here. We'll put in the landscaping, et cetera. And the last phase, of course, is Phase Three, where we do the building additions, is the last three units. And it'll be finishing removing of this parking lot over here, dressing up the, the access road here, completing the fire department walk-through and the sidewalks. So again, it divides really cleanly into those, into those phases. We've gone ahead and we've prepared some drawings that you do, you have not seen yet, and I won't belabor them. But we did break them into each phase. So we've got, again, this is the, all the work in, in the first phase, again, all the work in the second phase, and then, of course, lastly, the work in the third phase. Now, we're expecting the entire project from the time we start construction, the time completion to take about two years. And I've got a phasing letter that I can, I can send to you, but basically, it breaks down how that, you know, will be done. We're expecting to be ready with the first five units in about three months for the first COs.
Okay, so we did have a memo from Jan, but I wanted to ask a couple things. I think you have, I think some of the accessible parking goes away in the first phase, but are you gonna, what, how are you going to make sure that there's accessible parking if it's needed for these, for those?
That's a good point. What we would suggest is let's put some temporary striping on some of the existing spaces, temporary signage, so that they can have the accessible parking spaces while that first phase is
Okay, I mean, I just
It's a good point.
And and I think the mailboxes were somewhere in between, maybe in B or some, how are you, how are these people, or was that an external mailbox?
It was an external mailbox, yeah.
Okay.
And they'll purchase it and place it in the first phase.
Okay. For some reason, I thought it had been in the entryway. So people are going to be able to get in throughout construction. If they're already living there in Phase One, they'll be able to, to get in even though
Absolutely.
Phase Two and
Yes.
Okay, some of Jan's comments had things of like fire
Sorry, mine.
Fire access and fire sprinkler system.
Yeah, does that mean you addressed that, or you want to finish?
Nope, you can go ahead and address that.
Well, currently, only the 9B is, is, has fire sprinklers.
Okay.
So we've got them shut off now, but when the first unit gets occupied, they will all be working in, in the 9B building.
9B is the one closer to the pond?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
That's the first phase. In the second phase, it's the 9, existing 9A building. That will, the fire sprinklers will, will be currently running in, in 9B all during construction. And then in, when, when 9A has its first occupancy, obviously, the fire sprinklers will work in that phase as well. And the same goes for the third phase. First two phases will have fire, working fire sprinklers, you know, constantly.
And along that theme, the, the fire department wanted to make sure they could have access across sort of the front?
Yes.
Have, have you discussed this at all with the fire department? Or is that, they still going to be okay to, able to get into wherever they need to get?
Yes, the resolution is, is that we put a fire access road
Right.
Has permeable pavers on either side of the walk. So all combined, it'll be wide enough for the vehicles to pass through. So that starts construction in Phase Two, finishes construction in Phase Three. But in Phase, the concern was getting to the
To the back.
To the far side of the building.
Right.
Now, in Phase Three, you've still got access there, you know, where current, where you currently have it, so
Before Phase Three is built.
Before Phase Three is built, right. So you still have access on all sides.
Did you mention that the part of the rear parking lot, I'm going to say on the right side of the building, was coming out in Phase One?
Yeah, but it's only, it's only a little bit of it. If you, if you look at the drawing, where am I here?
We sure haven't gotten yet.
But the other side's your construction access.
It's just a little bit there that we're taking out. Most of the parking lot is in Phase Three that we've taken out.
Was your construction staging going to stay there?
We'll have, we'll have access for fire department enough, you know, but
Well, we'll have to just make sure.
Yeah.
Because right now, it's not a problem because nobody's living in the building.
Yeah.
As soon as you have the rear occupied, you're going to have to maintain 100, fire apparatus 150 feet around.
Absolutely, yeah. So we'll probably move this, the staging over to, to this far parking lot.
So one of our comments was that each plan, each plan per phase, show your fire access.
Yes.
And construction phasing pedestrian access to the building, all that.
Yes.
So the, for my, just to comment on that, that area that we're leaving with, where the parking is, I believe that's the same length where they were doing the pavers for the overall. So that'll be there, they'll have access to that.
So long as it's not your construction staging area.
Right.
So long as you define a, I think, a lane.
We'll note the staging area there.
And I think also the parking that we were talking about earlier, but the, the only thing that'll really go through there is when we're doing the new transformer, we will have to go through that area. But otherwise, they should have access to, to the park as well.
You're still going to do things, you know, I've been an advocate of EV chargers and
It'll be in the second phase.
Second phase?
Yeah, which is in that park near, I need to get the transformer from one side to the other side. I can't do that to the second phase. There's a holdup with the, the meter, I'm going to say this wrong, but the boxes that you have to put the electric meters in.
Yeah.
There's a backlog. It takes a while to get those.
Okay.
So, but it'll be done in the second phase, along the affordable hall somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously, I'm, I'm heartened to hear that the affordable units are going to be in Phase Two, because I'd hate to have Phase One and Phase Two done and Phase Three be next year.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm really glad that they will be in Phase Two. I think the other thing, just when you give us a letter or something, it helps me, I was helped a lot by having the unit numbers. So if you kind of put the unit numbers in, it just helps me
I did that on this
You did it?
Yeah.
Good, okay.
So can you just go ahead? All, all, all phases are sprinkler?
All phases will ultimately be sprinkler, yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
But right now, the only one half of that building was, was sprink, the 9B.
Yeah, the 9B.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Answered.
I kind of stole your memo. Do you have anything else?
We covered everything.
Okay. Okay, so this is actually asking for a waiver. So I think that means that what we would want is, I mean, you have these done, but have these submitted and then ask for a resolution from Jan for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, that has to be done by resolution.
Yeah. Do we have to, Jed, I'm sorry, do we have to officially agree to make a motion to not have a public hearing or something here, or just
No, that would be included in Jan's
Okay, so we just ask him for the resolution, and we'll move on that.
Consensus to
Yes.
Yes.
Construct the consent to draft the resolution.
Yep. Okay, good.
Good.
Anything else we need to do?
I like coming here, too.
They're all saying that.
After the
Yeah, no, no, no. When, when it comes time, close to the end, right, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everybody.
Good night.
How are you?
Are you happy to be here? Oh, man. Where's our reporter? He needs to be here and listen to all this stuff.
He's got my name on that.
Right, okay, so...
I say the same thing every time.
Right. This is really just a site, a report from the site visit that we did to St. Paul's Parish at 313 Smith Ridge Road in South Salem, New York. We had a site visit on Saturday, May 17th, 2025, at 9:00 AM. The attendees were Matt from the applicant, Charlene and I from the planning board, from the CAC, Sarah Kukaro, I think is how she pronounces it, and also Thomas from the CAC arrived after everybody had left and the tree people were chasing us out. So he didn't get to see much. But we gathered at the parking lot by St. Paul's Church, noted that the parking lot was generally flat, surfaced in gravel. You know, so obviously, the parking spaces couldn't be lined. And that was important, as we talked about it, because the, while Matt indicated that most of the time, the parking lot was not full, on some church holidays, the lots could be pretty full. And so the location, the proposed driveway, had to take into account that people could be parking...
Against that.
Against the side, and that it isn't really well-defined by lines. So you can't really tell them not to park in one section because it's full of gravel. So that, so we discussed that we were really coming to talk about the positioning of the house and to talk about, you know, the CAC had talked about other locations. And we also wanted to inform ourselves of the possibility, whether we really needed to ask for a tree survey or not for this situation. So we walked on an existing path that was close to the Pabro's driveway location. We saw the slope on the drive, on what would be, I'm sorry?
You're on a board with me tonight, I apologize about that.
No, no, it's good, all right. We, this is when we get to talk, not you. So the slope, you know, was being addressed by asphalt, and the asphalt basically, you know, would be treated by the stormwater infiltrator as well as the house. So we talked about that. The location of the house was on sort of a boulder-covered area, but it did have a slope. And so you could see how a raised ranch would allow an exposed basement and for the garage on a lower level and kind of be minimal height from the front, or one-story height from the front. So, and Matt thought that the boulders had been piled there when the, you know, and weren't indicative of bedrock, so it should be an easily accessible lot site. So the corners of the house were staked. My impression in the field was that the size of the house was quite modest. It is not a huge house in any way. We saw the proposed locations for the stormwater infiltrator, the septic system, and also noted that there was a small activity area laid out behind the church. It was clear that there were some nice trees that would have to come down to put the house there. But as we looked around at other locations, there were nice trees in almost every location we found. The, Matt showed us the special permit 100-foot setback, and that did limit the available area for the building. Because of some of the CAC concerns, we took, looked at moving the house towards the road, and then it would have to be two-story. It would be much larger, less screening from the road. Moving it away from the road further would mean that it would be closer to the neighbor's house and lose some of the screening to the neighbor's house. From a visual perspective, the larger trees seem pretty evenly distributed across the lot, and going to a different place from just visual inspection wouldn't seem to really allow many difference in the number of trees that had to be cut. So, and we ended by saying we would report out tonight, which we have done. So I think really, based on this, that the questions are, do we need a tree survey to proceed? I'll give my opinion, then maybe Charlene was there, and then, I think this is sort of a unique situation where the, it's a church property, it's a parish house. We understand it's really constrained. From my view, I would be comfortable without proceeding with a tree survey because it seemed pretty, it seemed, if you were gonna build a house, you have to cut some trees down somewhere. And we have the assurance that the lawn area would be minimal, just where things were disturbed in order to put in the house, that the intent was to try to keep trees there. So I'm okay not asking for a tree survey. Do you want to say?
Yes. Not only is this a unique situation in the sense that it is a parsonage and it would need a special permit, but also the land itself, it's just trees. You would make the property unusable if you did not allow, you know, and the tree survey is, it's clear there are some dead trees there, and that's being addressed, but there's no area that there's just clearance that they can do. So I would not suggest that a tree survey be done under these circumstances.
Yeah. So, I mean...
I'm familiar with the property, and I agreed with that the last time, saying I didn't think it was, there was value added by doing a tree survey.
Well, I think there would be value added in that we would know a little bit more about the trees, but I don't think it would change any decision or make any, I mean...
That's what I meant.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I don't want somebody in the future coming saying, you didn't have value for a tree survey. This is a situation where I don't think we're gonna make a different decision with or without a tree survey.
I'm understanding where both of you are coming from, saying this is a unique, well, maybe I'm not saying I'm understanding. I don't feel this is a unique situation. This is development on a property. This is a developed property that's looking to expand. I don't particularly think there's a tree survey necessary. That said, you know, we're still waiting for a stormwater permit application, a mitigation plan, and I feel that it may help the applicant confirm to me, because I'm not sure that this is the proper location. I know the property, I visited the site separately, saw the flags that are out there. I don't see, you know, the comments of the parking area, because it's just gravel, is difficult during holidays, during use, so we want to pull the building farther away so it doesn't block the driveway. Just because you don't use it properly doesn't mean it should define a house being farther away from a driveway. So, well, I don't want to make it difficult for anybody, and I don't think they particularly need a tree survey, but I would just hope that whatever plan is coming through is showing proper mitigation, that it's seeming significant, that this is the proper location for the house, because does it need a driveway with parking in front of a garage versus putting the house on the parking lot for the few times that you are fully using a parking lot for events? So is there a reason for there additional parking spaces on top of some sub-garage? By pushing it farther away, you know, we're adding coverage, the septic is now getting farther into the woods because we need to, you have the stormwater system. Just like everything gets pushed further and further into the woods, which is creating the more and more disturbance, more and more removal of trees. So, once again, I don't, it might not be necessary, because yes, it's a wooded lot. I don't need to know every single tree, because everywhere's on the wooded lot. But if this is the best location, that you think this is gonna be the least amount of trees, then for me, it may be helpful. I just, right now, I'm hesitant to say this is the right design for the location in what I'm seeing.
Okay, so I might have misled you. The reason to, that I made the point about the parking was that the driveway is not, it's a little bit more paved area because the driveway had to be not in the back corner.
It's offset from the corner. So as you enter the lot, and for the record, Matt Geronda from Vibo Associates, project engineer, you know, a couple of things I do want to mention about this church. Obviously, it's existed for close to 100 years. It's a very small congregation. The existing gravel parking lot has been sufficient through all these years. And typically, from what I understand, you know, the congregation is between six and eight people on a Sunday. If there's a funeral or a special service, maybe they get some additional parking. But when they do, they typically park against the building or against that rear of the parking area, so they can allow maneuvering in between. So the driveway was offset from the edge of the parking, about 30 feet, 35 feet, to allow for cars to park there and still access to this rectory. Now, another thing I also should mention, yes, we are here for a special use permit because this is a church, but essentially, we're proposing a single-family residence in a single-family residential zone. I understand that this is a special permit, and single-family residences require a driveway, they require a garage. You know, I don't really think it's out of the question to have that. And the architecture of the house was such, and the use of the lot was, we are limited by the 100-foot special use setback from the front property line. So we are pushed further to the rear of the property. They can maximize really their bang for their buck with the architecture of the house, with the walkout basement. And, you know, this is an applicant that is a church, they have limited funds. Their preference is this raised ranch with a walkout in the rear, which this section of the property allows for that. The only other portions of the property that have great change to allow for that architecture are really not usable because of the special use setbacks and the building setbacks. So when we walked on Saturday morning, the point I was trying to make was to identify that, that another part of the property really would require a different architectural design. And the raised ranch has limited, maybe as Jed mentioned, as Matt mentioned, that maybe a story and a half height exposed from the front view, which would be screened by over 150 feet of woods approximately. And that's why the location was chosen. The intention is really to use the church as it exists currently. We're not expanding. This is really for them to have, they have a tenured priest that currently lives with his family in New York City right now, and the church is looking to move him here full-time, establish roots here, and continue the church in its current use and as it's always been for close to 100 years. That's it.
Okay, go ahead.
Whether, I think this discussion is really whether they need a survey or not. I don't think that, because we don't have plans in front of us, so, you know, that discussion can be held when we have plans. And it's regardless of whether there's, you know, trees there or not, what we're saying is no matter where they build, there's gonna be tree removal. You know that if you want them to push it up, there's gonna be less tree removal, but we don't need a tree survey for that.
That's what I, that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's, so I understand what Matt's saying, but at this point in time, I think the cart is before the horse.
Fair enough.
But, so, thank you. So did you look at moving, I mean, I think what Paul is saying maybe is put it right at the corner of the, of the park, current parking area?
If we did that, you know, I always hate to design a site plan at a meeting.
Yeah.
But off the top of my head, I think that would impact the existing parking area, which is really, we're not trying to do.
Right.
And...
Because it almost becomes part of the yard, and then it becomes, right, I mean, I think...
Right. I think there's a visual impact from that as well, that is probably less than desirable in the location that we've chosen. It's really screened and hidden away for almost all views.
Right. I think the...
That's what I'm trying to say, is from my standpoint, without the tree survey, I'm taking all of this as undeveloped woodland property. So every square inch is equal. So I'm saying to the applicant's perspective, a tree survey may be beneficial to you to convince me that there are more valuable or less valuable trees in a particular area. Otherwise, I'm taking it as this is uniform, that if you're moving everything 50 feet away, you're cutting 50 feet less of woodlands of the same value, because I don't have, because we don't have the information.
Right.
And I understand that both ways. Doesn't mean I have to say yes or no. You know, I'm not saying this is an approval statement. That's just, that information is what helps me define those, because it is a lot of development in a wooded area for a, for an existing developed property, right? This isn't a vacant lot. It's not like, you know, the earlier application where it was a vacant lot.
Right. But, I mean, I think if it, because it's not developed with a house, I think in a residential area, they have a right to build a house. So, and we probably ordinarily wouldn't be seeing it except for a wetland permit, and the wetland is way away, so it's really stormwater for here.
It's actually special use.
Right, it's because they're here for a special use. So the, the other thing, and I think I can share this, I think Matt told us that we didn't, he didn't have architectural plans yet, because they wanted to have some sense that this is really where they can build before they start to spend any more money on anything. So even with the modular, the intent is to have modular.
Yes.
So, so, so I think we can sort of say by consensus, we feel we don't need a site plan, do, I mean, a tree plan?
Yeah, I agree from everything I've learned.
Right, you don't need that. So then...
I'll take that.
Yep, you take that. Do you, did you, but sort of for this next stage of thinking about architectural, because I know ACCARC needs that.
Yes.
Do you want us to kind of give you some assurance that we're, we feel that this is a site worth investigating, or how, I just don't want...
I'm good with what they're proposing.
Okay.
I mean, if the board are...
And I think I do...
To give a straw poll as an opinion, as far as, you know, the general concept of our plan tonight, I would take that.
So generally, I mean, I do understand that if you made the driveway a little shorter, the, a couple of less trees might be cut down, but actually, where it was, there were probably not that many that were gonna go.
There was not that many mature trees where the driveway was, truthfully. You know, it's, you visited the site, it's a mix...
Of some very young trees and some very old trees, yeah.
Yes. I wouldn't say that the very old trees were truly specimen trees. The ones that really were, in my opinion, are the ones towards the rear of the property, which we are preserving.
And the ashes that are dead.
And the ashes that, you noticed a couple of them, that they were shooing us out of the way to cut down, if we were parked on anything. So, sure, you know, to get the general opinion of the, you know, obviously, we have to work out the details, but...
Right, so we will need to see the details, but generally, do you...
I'm okay.
Paul, I think, my impression is you'd like to see some more information before...
Yeah, I think the concept of a house on the property and the development doesn't seem unfeasible to me.
Right. You're kind of good with it?
Yes.
And Charlene? Okay. So we're kind of, we're kind of feeling like it's, yeah, it's not, it's, don't run and say we're done. Okay, but, yeah, but...
So, and I appreciate you all coming out on Saturday morning. Sorry to just interrupt you.
No, that's all right. I have a question for Kevin. Kevin, in the zoning, especially use permit, that's for the church, correct? A property can have more than one use, correct?
It's not, it's, the special permits for the church and the parish house. It's churches and parish houses.
Right. Parish house is accessory to church.
The parish house is part of the...
Yes.
It is part of the...
Okay. And I think that also gives me some comfort in saying that this is a special use permit. It's for, you know, for a parish house, it's a very specific use, and I'm a little more comfortable saying, you know, waiving the requirement for a tree survey because of that, because I don't think it expands to every residential property in the town.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Anything else you need from us?
No, again, I just wanted to say thank you all for your time, coming out Saturday morning, your time tonight. And I've been in contact with the applicant, they're working out the contract details right now to get the architectural plans, which will have more... will have more clearly defined exterior elevations to clarify the information for the board and be coordinated with our site plans. And that's it. So we won't be discussing more in the future. I'm curious, will be in touch about getting.
Do you want to work on the public area for June or July?
You know, I think realistically, it's probably July at this point. You know, again, working with the church and the vestry, their committee is.
They're committed.
It's different than working with private developers.
Right.
They're telling me to be patient. Normally, I'm telling the guys I work for, please, you be patient. Anyway, thank you very much for all of your time.
All right, thank you.
You have a good night.
And hope you ended up at a good game by the time.
Actually, it was a great game. Girls won 12 to 1.
Oof.
Took down in Fairfield.
All right.
That's not even a game.
Okay. The next item on our agenda are a series of discussions. The first one is Somers, New York, gave us notice that they, well, they gave the town board notice that we, they intended to amend their town code to decrease the percent of affordable dwelling units in multiple-family residence districts from 15% to 10%. As is usual in this kind of situation, I think we should send the town board a notice that we have no comment unless any of you wish to have a comment.
No.
So, Judd, remind me, do I need a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion for me to send a letter on behalf of the town board, I'm sorry, on behalf of the planning board to the town board, saying that we have no comment on the Somers proposal.
No motion.
Okay. Paul made and Bruce seconded. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And it just so happens, I have a letter here to that effect. Okay. That I will sign. All right. The second, second item on the agenda, yeah, the Karnak, the Ys, prepared the memo. The referral from the Wilton, Connecticut Zoning Board of Appeals for a Hemsley residence on 121 DeForest Road, Wilton, Connecticut. Application for 15 by 25-foot in-ground pool in the rear yard setback. Again, as in typical on this, I'd look for a motion to have a, for me to write a letter from the planning board to the town board on behalf, that expressed we have no comment.
I'll make a motion that you can get.
John. Okay. Do we have a second? Charlene, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a, is a discussion, we were referred from the, the town board, a proposed amendment to the town code that would permit private helipads on parcels of more than 50 acres via special use permit issued by the zoning board of appeals. Hello.
Good evening, members of the board. So like you said, the town board requested that I meet with the zoning board and the planning board for input for my proposal. I did meet with the zoning board last month and they were in favor. They actually requested reduced it to 25 acres, which I would like to, I think sticking with 50 acres is fine. Could always do another special permit, I guess, or appeal. So I'd prefer to keep it at 50 acres. And hopefully, the board has had time to review my proposal. So that, basically, the, the history of why I came up with this was kind of a two-part, two reasons. One is for STAT flights, which is an emergency medical transport helicopter. So having these zones, these already planned out zones throughout the town that EMS fire and the police are already aware of, and they're designated landing zones that have been approved through the, I'm sorry, the building inspector and the zoning board of appeals and everything like that, and took the criteria of what I put in here. Basically, you'll have these already known areas, and if anybody was to do a private helipad, they would have to give us permission to utilize their pad for these purposes. The second reason was to be a, take a proactive approach to these one-man helicopters. I don't know if you're aware of them. They basically have these electrical one-person helicopters that have a flight time of approximately 20 minutes. So they're like probably drones the size of, you know, the table right here that will be buzzing throughout the town. And they're becoming more affordable. They have gas-powered ones that you could look up on Facebook Marketplace for probably about $10,000, $15,000, $20,000. The electric ones are still at like $100,000, but they will come down. And we already have a drone problem in town. And having these one-person helicopters don't require pilot's license either. So I'm, this is one of the reasons, to kind of make this a 50-acre zoning on these helipads. So if you have 50 acres and there's not that many locations in town, I believe there's approximately 12. So that's kind of the history of it. There are places up in Dutchess County, I believe the town of Red Hook that has this implemented as well, something very similar. But that's, that's really the gist of it. As you all know, actually, the day after I presented this to the zoning board, there's actually a STAT flight that was needed for 684, that actually landed on the opposite lane of 684 to transport a critical patient to a trauma center. And we're not talking about taking somebody to the ambulance from here from Lewisboro to northern Westchester. This is all the way down to Valalla. These are trauma centers, these are very serious accidents. Critical incidents, God forbid. I don't think I have to say it, I don't want to say it, but if there's mass casualties or just injuries, you have different landing zones, you have different ambulances, you have, it's going to be a huge chaotic scene. So having this already known is just an asset to us and first responders. What else? Do you have any input? Is the building department?
No, I agree with you. 50 is a good threshold. You know, whether it ever gets reduced would be an appeal. Personally, I don't think it should. I think 12 locations potentially.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a place to start.
Yeah.
And then if deciding what we find.
Finally puts Lewisboro ahead of the curve, not behind.
And I agree.
We can, you know, have these all laid out, have the old FAA approved, you know, on pad, lighting, you know, it's really a generator. I mean, clearances, and that 50 acres is contiguous. You can't have 20 on one side of the street and 30 on this side of the street. So that knocks out some of the larger parcels may think to be qualified.
And also, back in the day, this came up in the zoning board of appeals meeting, is back in the day, we, you know, we used to utilize the firehouse or the town park, the baseball field. Nowadays, there's just more and more events going on and these are, you know, so there's the carnival of the firehouse, all the parking at the town park, there's already stuff going on over there. And God forbid, there's a mass incident at the firehouse because this is what these people are targeting these days. Unfortunately, this is what we live in, you know? And again, I'm just trying to take a proactive approach.
Right. So I, I do think it's a good idea. And I think, you know, the zoning board should, should have the special permit. I do think that some of the code as it's proposed, I would actually sort of, so, for example, Kevin just mentioned, the building inspector just mentioned that the FAA approval, I think that would be a thing to put into the code, to make sure that the FAA is aware of it so that when, I mean, if somebody says, I mean, we've had a military helicopter come down, you know, Mayday, Mayday, I need a place to land, can you get to this place? Right, that's what I'm saying. We had that.
On the true farm, yeah.
So, you know, can you get to this place? It's a, it, so, and I would even say beyond just a medevac, I mean, I could imagine.
Forest fires.
Fire, you know, something. So, so you kind of have in here medical, and I'm kind of saying any kind of emergency or military, God forbid, you know, but if they're looking for a fugitive and need to sit down, you know, so I'm kind of, I would, I like the idea. I would think I would work on the wording a little bit and try to say it. I also know by talking to the assessor that she's concerned that if we say, well, we want the town to be able to use it, do I have to, you know, reduce the tax rate on that? So I would add a little thing in the law that says.
It's a fair trade. No, no tax benefit.
Yeah, you don't, you don't get, you know, you're putting it in for your use, because I think one of the other comments out of the zoning board was, well, who's going to pay for it? No, no, no. The landowner is doing it. We just get you to be a good member of the community and allow emergency access when needed. So, I mean, I'm, I think what I'm saying is I agree with all of the concept, but I think there's wording here. I did notice at one point, for example, I think you said 135 decibels? That's really loud. Now, maybe for emergency, but I would not want to be on the other side of the 50-acre parcel that had 135 decibel. You know, I'm not sure what the right one is. I looked at, I looked.
I just looked at other, what like Dutchess County has and stuff like that.
Yeah. I mean, I found one that says, you know, 75 decibels. I don't know what's right, but, but it seems to me.
75.
Well, 85.
75 decibels is very, very low.
Yeah, that's like a vacuum cleaner.
Over 75 decibels. Well, I would, I would say that, you know, that 130, 135.
That's loud.
Is probably at the landing zone.
Sure.
Okay. Then you, then you could, you could probably interpret, because this can't be on the edge of the property either, okay?
500 feet, I agree.
Yeah, so, you know, you could, you could do a sound test, you know, at 100 feet, 200, 300, 400, what the drop is on that 135.
Right.
And you're going to be way lower. I would suspect you're below 50 by the time you get to the edge of the property.
Okay. I mean, the other thing, I mean, so I'm just going to say some of the reactions to some of the things, like, you know, dust shouldn't fly over the edge of the property. I'm kind of thinking you should, we should probably be able to ask for a, a somewhat dust-resistant at least surface, you know? I don't care whether it's grass or asphalt or something, but I would really discourage the idea of somebody just landing in a dust field, you know?
I mean, I don't think the homeowner would probably want that either.
Exactly. So that, that's why I'm saying, I don't think it would, I don't think it would hurt anybody's intent if you said, you know, the dust should be minimized instead of the dust shouldn't cross the edge of the property line. I mean, these, so this is stuff that you might not know, for the, for the comprehensive plan, we just spent a lot of time going through lines of code, you know, line by line. And so realizing that these kind of things matter. We might want to have a fee to look at this. I think your code currently says, or a structure. Are we intending to allow people to land on roofs? I would probably take out the word structure and just say, you know, a, maybe a platform or something, but maybe.
I think, and I haven't discussed this with Dave, I'm just, actually, with Jan, that, you know, when this helicopter lands, it has to be a stable surface.
Exactly.
Not landing on lawn, but be realistic. I suspect it's going to be like grass, pavers.
Something, yep.
Might have grass rolling in between.
Astro turf.
You know, or something that has a substantial base.
I agree.
That they can land. And we need to discuss, you know, lighting requirements and things like that, you know?
Well, and I did notice some of the other places had some kind of fire suppression requirements.
You're going to need that in the law.
Right. So it should probably be in the code. And, you know, some places require insurance. I mean, I went and looked at a number of different towns. I didn't know about Red Hook, I missed that one. But, you know, some places had insurance requirements that basically say, you're not going to hold the town liable. And that's probably not a bad idea. So this is, what I think the net is, I think we're in support, but we've been looking at code enough that we want to kind of modify some. Go ahead, Charlene.
And also, it's since, maybe it's just me, maybe other people know, but I don't know the ins and outs of the helicopter FDA regulations or, you know, as, you know, what kind of landing pad. So my suggestion would be is that the zoning board chairperson, or if there's a site plan review, have the ability to hire a consultant who, and I don't know what kind of consultant you would have, but I'm sure there's experts in that field, to just discuss the plan.
Well, I think if you leave them, the applicant, saying we're, if you want this pad, that here's the standards that we want, okay? And so not that everybody does it differently. And it would make it easier, you know, to go to the zoning board and say, yep, this is exactly what we're going to do, they can review it. Do you have 50 acres? Do you have the distance? It makes it seamless.
Right. But do we know exactly what a helipad?
The requirements.
Requirements.
Thinking about doing this, we can require them to supply all that information and we can copy that at this point, you know?
Well, I think.
Have them spend money to come up with.
I think if they had an FAA approval.
You might not even need an FAA.
Right, they don't need an FAA approval. That's why, somebody that knows what they're talking.
I believe if you were to register it as like a public landing, that's where you're going to have to get FAA approval. This is not a public landing.
Hmm, okay. Because I thought that.
Kevin, I think there should be rules and regulations, but I also think that the chairperson should be able to, and the board should be able to have someone who is knowledgeable in this particular field, you know, because I have no knowledge of that and I would want some. And Jan, do you have any particular knowledge in?
I mean, I've been to a ton of landings, but no, not on this side.
I do have a question.
And especially since everything is changing so quickly.
When I, when I read through there, this is pretty much the landing area is for the largest size vehicle that is planned there. What happens if we're going to use this as an emergency area if there's already a helicopter from that person who owns that property sitting there? What, how does that work?
I believe that put no storage.
Yeah, I thought we talked about no storage.
Oh, I thought there was a.
Okay, so no storage means you can't keep, got it, okay.
Oh, I thought.
I didn't understand that. That's perfect. That answers that question. You do say no storage.
Yeah.
I just didn't understand what that meant.
Yeah, it's not parked there permanently, yeah.
No, I thought there was a tie-down area, though.
There is.
Well, you tie it down just because of wind and things like that. I mean.
But that, but that's just a temporary tie-down.
Okay. I was, I was thinking that as a.
Charlene's concept of, you know, I think you may want to, the applicant to have, I'm making up a term, a helicopter engineer specialist to come give us a design package. And once we have that package of how much area they need, what the landing surface material should be, what the proper lighting is supposed to be, the clear area around, I know we made, we made a general thing in there.
Access for the fire truck.
And that's, and that's.
Yeah, I don't know what the term.
If you don't have that on the checklist, sorry.
Okay. Just so long we have an expert giving us some information, and then if we need to somebody to decipher it for us, we can hire some, you know, a consultant, because that's the usual question.
I guarantee there are airport design engineers out there that can give us that.
So I think what this might be sort of leading to is the statement that we think a site plan is required to be provided. Not a 50-acre, but kind of a, here's the layout, here's the access for emergency vehicles, you know, if they have to.
I think if you have, if you meet the design criteria of everything, you know, and the key is to have all the bullet points. If, I'm making up numbers. Do you have 100-foot clearance around all sides? Okay? You know, is the pad needing the minimum dimensions, you know? And if you have all those bullet points, it's, obviously, it's going to be put on a survey and obviously the zoning board will see that survey. If any of them are not hit, it's grounds for just not accepting it.
Right.
I mean, the whole idea is not to reinvent the wheel on every application.
Sure.
I think you want to make this streamlined, it's consistent. Let's face it.
Maybe a hard sell, too.
You want, pilots want to know the landing on the same type of space every time.
Well, that's, that's sort of, so to give, that's sort of why I was saying, put some of these things into the code so when the zoning board looks at it, they can say, does it, you know, do these guys have insurance? Do they have a?
That's a check loss.
No, most of them. No, most valid.
What?
We, we want them to be, have on their policy that they have a pad for their homeowners and then they're holding the town harmless.
Right.
And they'll buy an MOU that they're going to have to sign.
Greg, Greg is going to want that no matter what.
Right. I mean, so, but I think, I think, so, again, I think some of these things could be added to the code without making it any harder for anybody to approve it, but it makes it almost easier for the zoning board to come in and say, okay, do you have a, you know, a flight path figured out, you know, at least meant, do you have a surface that's stable? Do you have a, you know?
I, I think, I think if we had a design package, okay, that these are the minimum requirements and, and, uh, Judd decides with his 50 acres, he wants to have a helicopter pad, here's the design requirements, meet them, okay?
How, how, who's going to formulate the design requirements?
Dave and I can talk about this more.
One meeting.
Sorry. I, I don't know who the first applicant could possibly be.
Only one of those standards before.
Um, but I think we could probably generate that information and have it reviewed.
Well, usually, I think, in the, in the special permit code, you have a number of criteria that are...
Specific criteria.
That are part of the special permit code.
That have to be satisfied in order to, in order to qualify for that, for the use.
Right. So, and, um, the FAA, I mean, I found a design manual that said, here's the evaluation flow chart that you check, and it had some of these items on it, which is, I didn't come up with these on my own, it's because they said, oh, you ought to have fire suppression, duh, you know, you ought to have dust-proof, uh, dust-proof or dust-resistant ground something. Um, I think we probably should say, we don't want you landing on roofs. Um, one of the things that I thought was, I mean, one of the, one of the places said, so I think we, you have in there a proposal for a certain number a month, but you might want to say, but by the way, that can't all be one day. I mean, the maximum one day, excluding all the emergency services stuff. Might be four, just so you don't, the neighbors don't have somebody coming in, you know, I'm doing all 10 of mine, I'm doing, um, taking my friends for a joyride around the town, you know, to look at, you know, so again.
And again, I don't think, I, I mean, me, if I had a helicopter on 50 acres, I don't think I'd want to aggravate the neighbors.
Right.
Because again, they could, you have to reapply every two years and you can't, you know, obviously. I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, again, so the net of it is...
There's definitely a rule for improvement and fine-tuning it.
Right. I really support...
I'm not the best at writing codes, so.
I think we could have some of these other municipalities that have been proactive and see if they have a design manual, at least to start the conversation.
That, that's my...
And I think it would be extremely helpful for all the boards to be confident that we have that information.
Right.
And it makes it easier for the applicant, too.
Right. Applicants.
I could take a trip to Danbury Airport tomorrow and kind of chew somebody's ear off over there and kind of find something, get some sort of guidelines or some direction to.
We love, we love the idea and the fact that we're getting ahead of it for a change.
Yeah. And again, this is to benefit residents and just people passing through town, God forbid.
Maybe you can call the county and, you know, because...
I, I have contacts.
Yeah, so, yeah, that would, that would be great. And also, maybe we should have an exception to all our, like, noise and stuff for the emergency, you know, that those that apply, like, i- i- if there's an emergency, you should have an exception that, that, that decibel doesn't apply and, you know what I mean?
Sure, just some of those military aircrafts are allowed.
Yeah, yeah.
Lighting, yeah, well, that could be after hours.
Right.
So, you know, I'm, I hope you understand that we're, we're like, you know, vehemently in favor of this, but, but want to make sure that when everybody gets a chance to actually look at it, it's as smooth a process as possible. And if it takes a little longer now to get the code right, in the future, everything should get easier. Okay? Um, yeah. So what, this is, we've been kind of throwing out a lot of ideas. We, we...
No, I'm good.
Oh, I thought you had a comment.
No, no, I'm good.
Next step.
Yeah, the next step is we should write a letter to the town board, right?
I believe I'm going to try to get to the Monday's meeting, if that's possible.
Well...
Because I don't, I'm going away for...
Monday's is a holiday, you know?
Or Tuesday, I'm sorry, they put it on Tuesday.
Right. So I think we can express some of these things in a letter and then maybe offer to work on a revised, a revised code.
Based on the information.
Based on, yeah, based on what we're getting, um, you know, it sounded like Kevin might have more things, um, but, but to offer to work, but, but to sort of say...
Here are some things, but...
Here are some things, we like the, we like the concept. We want to make...
Very supportive, especially of the emergency.
Right. And we want to make it possible, easier for the applicant and for the reviewing boards, you know, just to, to know what they've got to do to put it together and try to get that into the code. So, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you.
We need a motion.
We, so I need a motion allowing me to, well, Judd will probably write the letter, but for me to send the letter on behalf of the board to the town board. All right, Charlene?
I'll second that.
Oh, it looks like Bruce seconded first. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You can finally go home.
Yeah. Okay. Um, the next item on the agenda, I think we have is, oh, just to talk about the, the adopted and proposed zoning amendments. So I'm very pleased to say that the town board, um, adopted a number of zoning amendments. What we still need to work on is steep slope, excavation and fill. Both of those, I think, are pretty close except for, I, I don't, I'm not, they're pretty close. They need some, um, some fine tuning. I think the, the town board in general wanted less restrictions and wanted, we had a separate chapter, they wanted embedded back in the, the main zoning board, so, uh, zoning code 220. So it shouldn't be that hard. We have a short-term rental proposal. Um, I think that New York State has just done this, this new law and it allows or it requires information to flow to the county. I'd like to know exactly how that, you know, and, and taxes to flow to the county. I'd like to better understand that and how that could be useful to us and if it keeps us from doing certain things. I think we can put requirements on, but I think we have to avoid words like registry. So I think there's some more work to be done on that. And then there's also a septic code that we talked about and I don't think we ever quite got there. So, um, there's more work to be done on that. I just wanted to review that.
The other piece that was kind of set to the side is the battery energy storage systems that I think, like a lot of municipalities, Lewisboro's kind of adopting a wait-and-see approach. New York is examining maybe some model code standards, so that's out there also.
Yes. Do we know what the model code status is?
I don't know what the status is.
It's still not, it hasn't come out yet.
We'll know in September. Seriously, I mean, that's the new state code, unless they push it back again.
September?
Will officially go into effect in September and you'll have the right to use the old code or the new code, but it'll be addressed in there. There are drafts out there.
There are drafts.
They can, they still have you in 30 or 64 days to tweak that stuff.
Okay.
They're going to be addressing short-term rentals?
This is now for the battery storage, the large-scale battery storage?
Short-term rent, uh, rental, I had given them, the town board, my proposal. Many towns do require registration, so you can go and do yearly inspections to make sure they meet the fire safety code and that's the purpose of it. There would be adding fees involved in that because hunting down the hotel tax is almost impossible.
Well, apparently this is part of what the New York State law is trying to bring into effect. They didn't, they didn't address things like, that I think some of the proposals I've seen do say is like, okay, you've got to post how, or let people know how to get in touch with the owner if the owner isn't on-site. I think the housing committee actually sort of came out in support with having, of support of having a housing, requiring the housing, the owner to live on-site, even if it's in a adjacent, different parcel or adjacent parcel. Um, you know, so there's some stuff, garbage, garbage, you know?
Parking, egress, fire safety, um, there's a whole laundry list, including have it listed on their insurance policy that it is an Airbnb or ADHSDR, um, just so, God forbid, what happened in Rockland County, that they, we know there's coverage.
Judd, it, what does this, what does the state law allow localities to do? Are there any restrictions?
I don't think that it necessarily ties, it, it, there's...
It's not like the hotel tax that you need a special legislation to...
I think what I...
We still have some over freehand.
Yeah, well, I think what it said is if you require reporting, you, you either, either the county requires reporting or a municipality can, but you don't, you can't ask the booking agents or whatever to report to both county and, and town.
And I don't think the county has done anything on it.
I think the county has to opt out. So the county...
Oh, they have to opt out?
The way I, I'm not a lawyer, the way I read the code, the county has to opt out. So stuff should be almost flying to somebody in the county, but I don't know who is getting it. I, but, so that's, that is something I think we need to investigate a little more, but that's not a, not tonight. Okay. Um, any further discussion on any of this? So I'm, I do want to say, just for the record, that I appreciate the town board's attention to the, um, you know, the proposed zoning amendments and the fact that it, they, after the comprehensive plan, the zoning changes got made because that's really where implementation starts taking place. So, um, we can implement the, the comprehensive plan because we now have these changes to the zoning code. And we have a few more to do, but, you know, a awful big chunk. As you could tell by the agenda package, page 60 to 120 or something was all, was all the codes that were done. Okay. Um, any, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes of April 15th, 2025. Paul and...
Seconded.
Seconded by, um, Charlene. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Bruce abstains because he wasn't here. Our next meeting is June 17th, 2025. I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:54.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
John moves. Bruce seconds. We all celebrate. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Did we get any, um, response back?